I know she's here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so do I remember not having the roll call and then the other time she came in?
Yes. Here she comes, so you can mark it.
Very late, towards the back.
Yeah.
Skylar Westall. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I'd ask everyone to join me. A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to move on to adopting the agenda. We have an amendment that I would like to make to the agenda tonight. We have a public hearing scheduled, item A for 7:15, the municipal airport annexation, and item resolution 2018-13. I would like those canceled tonight and moved to our meeting the 2nd of July. So if I could get a motion to approve the agenda with items A, a republic hearing, and the 20 resolution 2018-13 canceled, I would accept that motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the mentioned changes to remove the hearing at 7:15, the airport annexation, and the resolution A, 2018-13, remove that argument.
Yeah, here is.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make those changes to the agenda. And I just wanted to explain why we're doing that. We did not get the information to our turning in time for a thorough legal review, and that's our fault. Garland has been busy on other city matters, and I wanted to make sure we had a good legal opinion before we discussed this. And that will... We also have a new council coming onboard in July. If there are concerns, or were concerns tonight, then we would then have to have a new council approve that subsequent to tonight's hearing. So I think the best plan of action is to allow that to be reviewed and taken up in our next council meeting. Are there any other questions, or comments, or discussion?
Under new business, item C, Georgia, we did not get your signature on the easement.
Okay.
When we get to that item, we'll want to table that.
Table that. Okay, thank you, Misty, for pointing that out. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I would remind all council members that if there is any conflict of interest on any of the items that we hold out tonight, that you make that known to the paraconcile privately. Thank you. This time, I'd like to introduce Shelley Good from Cato Forsteh. It's in our audit committee, or audit firm, that has looked at our finances. And Shelley, can you give us a report, please?
Yes, can you hear me? Um... Thank you. Sorry, I'm here. Like Mia mentioned, yes, I'm Shelley Goodrich from Cato Forsteh. We performed the financial statement audit and the uniform guidance audits for the city for the year end, December 31st, 2017. The audit report, I spoke to them prior in detail. We talked through a lot of the questions, the details. The audit report will reflect a clean opinion for all of the funds, one adverse opinion, similar presentation to last year. There were some findings that we talked through. We talked through recommendations, corrective action plans, and with the approval of you all tonight, I will finalize the audit, and thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. And I guess one question I would ask, as you and your firm look through our city finances, do you have an opinion that our finances are being looked after accurately and in accordance with the approved accounting procedures?
Yes, the clean opinion in the financial statements in the funds would be the reflection of no, I would say, glaring issues there, and we do not have any findings to report that would relate back to a lack of control processes, like maybe what you mentioned.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you share why we have... You didn't share the reason for the adverse opinions?
Yes, I can. The adverse opinion is reflected because there's one column left out of one of the pages of the financial statements because the housing authority should be included there in a separate column. Tell me the name, is it Fall River?
It's the Housing Development Authority.
Thank you. That's been left out of the financial statements primarily just because the city doesn't choose to hold their audit report until the Housing Development Authority can get their audit completed, which usually isn't until the fall. And the city just didn't want their audit to hang out there unapproved until the fall. So in lieu of waiting on them, they've taken an adverse opinion on one of the pages in the financial statements, but everything else reflects a clean audit opinion.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. And again, thank you for the time you and your firm spent looking over our books. We appreciate you having me down here.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
And again, Misty, I want to thank you and your staff for the work that you do, and for the council that oversees all of our finances and procedures. So, good report, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would accept a motion to accept the audit, preliminary audit.
I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary audit, given to this by Cato Forsteh, for the 2017 audit.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept this audit. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Misty and her staff for the clean audits. She gives up her time every two weeks to answer my questions as we're going through the billables, but I appreciate that. They're doing great work, so thank you.
Very well.
Thanks, Misty.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. We went through a lot of questions today, and appreciate it.
I'll thank you too, Misty. We're all lovely.
Okay, are there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 4th council meeting. I believe we do have a correction to those minutes, and Misty, if you could highlight that correction, we'd make the motion with the correction, please.
The resolution listed in the unofficial meeting minutes of our June 4th meeting has both the motion and the second coming from Georgia Holmes. I did review the tape and confirmed that the second was by Arlene Kane, and so I request that the modification be made to the second, changing the name of Holmes to Kane.
I'll make a motion to change the resolution ruled by Holmes, seconded by Arlene Kane.
I'll second that.
I'll get it right.
And would your motion be to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay. There a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and then to approve the minutes as corrected. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We move on in the agenda to claims or bills in between of $203,827... No, $872.41. I'd accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between of $203,872.41.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, approve bills in between. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have some corrections to the current claims, and again, I'd ask Misty to address those on page seven and page eight of your packages.
The total claims are decreased by $198.50 to $84,012.91. The changes are due to page seven, Fall River Health Services claim. We had not applied the discounts that the city is eligible for, so that's less $44.20 after applying our discounts. And then the top of page eight to the two minutes for the Hot Brook Road Rehab Asphalt Hatching Surface Treatment. We did receive two invoices with two different numbers. We went with the bigger number until hearing back from the engineer, and that the lower number is $154.30 decrease was the one that we should pay. So the total decrease is $198.50 for those two.
Okay, I'd accept a motion then to approve current claims of $84,012.91.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims as amended by Misty, and I'd also like to add another change to the current claims. Now on page 12, Steve's Spot Spray for $5,910.8. There's a couple things with this one that I think we need to give Misty and staff an opportunity to look at further. It's a 22% increase from what was originally quoted for the services. And the spray for the Mueller Center, there's a concern that might already have been paid, so I'll need to look into that. So I would make the recommendation to approve it with changes that Misty has talked about and deleting $5,910.8. If I did my math correctly, that would bring the total to $78,102.83.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, then, that we do have further amendment to the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob, for catching that. Next item on our business is communication from the public. Are there any communications from the public?
I think everybody except one is aware, I'm Brian Spitzer, and tonight I'm here as chairman of the board of the Mississauga Total Starship Foundation. I have two items to talk to you about tonight. One is a check for Misty for our second half of our payment on the sound system, which the city agreed to fund last year for the pageant. I once again want to thank the council and the city for that support last year. It was definitely a plus for the pageant, as well as other events that happened throughout the year with the Mueller Center. On the second of Jan. 5th, for us, as was announced Saturday night during the pageant, the next three years of the pageant will be held in Brookings, South Dakota. And as such, we no longer have a use for the lighting system that exists in the Mueller Center. That includes all lights above your heads, 30-some lights above your heads with colored fixtures, a truss, three support, I guess you call it winches, above the system that elevates it up and down, including the lights. This represents an over $14,000 investment between the pageant and the Mueller Center. It is a termination of the pageant to surplus it and offer it to the city at no cost. We would expect and hope that the city use that with great favor and profitability and enhanced use of the Mueller Center overall, and we hope that is accepted on your behalf.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that.
That's very generous of you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, we thank the city for the support over the years and make good use of what we've left in time, because it is an improvement for the pageant and to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. And again, we, the 70-plus years of having it here, which is going to be missed, I know the community is sad to see it go, we wish the pageant well in Brookings, and we appreciate your efforts in making the improvements for the pageant and for our Mueller Center, so very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Misty, if you could take that note down so that we could officially accept that at the next meeting.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Are there any other communications from the public? Okay, seeing none. We do have a hearing at 7:20. We can move on to personnel actions. I'd accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
I'll make a motion to accept personnel actions A through E.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that those personnel actions be approved. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We can move on into committee reports until our 7:20 time. Carol Ann, administrative and finance.
We met earlier this month, and I do not have a report, and the next report will not be given by me. I think it's...
Thank you, Carol Ann. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
The airport committee did meet as a post family flying. They just kind of took what we did do and hoped that we can have another one next year. Anyway, there won't be meeting until Friday at 8:00 at the airport again.
Okay. Thank you, Georgia. Appreciate that. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Ron is not here. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
We met on June 6th. A quorum was not present. Old business. We discussed the status of the daily bread sign. We're trying to get them to fix a correct sign. Mr. Powers discussed legal procedures for executing judgment on the demolition lane on the Community Action Building. Mr. Schlegel, on behalf of 629 North River Street, presented a photograph of a proposed mural for the side of the building. Brian Crawford, a member of the public, expressed objection to the mural since he did not believe it was historic or arrogant related. Other members agreed with him. A vote will be taken by email. We discussed the application by C. Winia for his building at 713 River Street. When we get a formal estimate, we'll vote on that by email. Signage at Santos, 237 North River, he put up the sign, didn't ask for approval. We're working on that. The sign will be approved, I'm sure, by email. We did also discuss with Scott Sogi about the portable toilets on the property, and he's gonna try to get them to move them or make them not visible from the street. The painting application for the dance studio was discussed, an email vote will be taken. Window signage at the Ditterbrook Cafe was approved by email and has been installed. No July meeting.
Okay, thank you, Carol Ann. And at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. What we will be doing is considering a application for retail on-off sale malt beverage license to be used at 237 North River Street, and that's Santos Bar and Grill. At this time, I declare the hearing open. Are there any comments from the public as to why this liquor license, malt beverage license, should be given or should not be given? Linda, Brittany, are you here to make any comments on your behalf?
Do you have a conder?
We just wanted to get a beer license, because we're having Mexican food as soon as everybody gets everything done in the restaurant, and we've had a lot of people ask if we could get one, is why I applied.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the public?
Love Mexican food.
Any comments, questions from the council?
Have you had a beer license before, Linda? Nope.
Okay, again, Linda, we're thanking you for the new business on our busy street and wishing you well. I did, for the council's benefit, did check with our police department. There's no reason. They feel that this license should be denied, so we encourage the council to approve it. And seeing no other comments from the public, I would go ahead and close the hearing. The time is 7:22, and I would accept a motion from the council to approve this application for retail on-off sale malt beverage license.
I'll make a motion to accept the application for Santos Bar and Grill for retail on-off sale malt beverage license to be used at 237 North River Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this application. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll jump back into our agenda. Under committee reports, Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar is not here. Parks Recreation, Beautification, Cultural Development, Marty.
Next Parks meeting will be Tuesday, July 3rd at 3:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning commission, Arlene.
The next meeting, planning and zoning meeting will be July the 18th at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bob.
The next public safety meeting will be June 20th, this Wednesday, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public works, Bob.
Public works met on June 12th. Mayor Cotty, Kim, Misty, Scott, Sean Healy, and Steve Alexander, myself, with our under old business. We've been following the request proposals for workforce housing. There were no RFPs received for workforce housing. It's expected that the announcement for the RFPs was late enough in the construction season that contractors didn't respond. They'd already had the work lined up for this year. The committee still believes the city should pursue building workforce housing on city property. Kim and Scott will continue looking at what needs to be changed in the RFP to encourage more contractors to submit bids. The Houston-Seward Avenue project, we've been following that closely. One easement is still unsigned, but it'll allow the city to use its preferred route, the most direct route. The project will still be able to begin with alternate route if that easement is signed. I expect they will probably have something to add that they are trying to get this taken care of, so it's just a technicality. It's not gonna stop, it'll probably be just a little jog in a route rather than a direct straight line. The request proposals for the brush piles in the landfill, we're still waiting on word from the state to whether they're gonna grant our... Approve our grant request to help us remove those brush piles. Fall River Water Users, we've started very general discussions with them. They're asking if it would be possible to maybe renew the contract before its current expiration in 2022 and possibly shortly. Yeah, just very general discussions at this point. Pete Lee and Son Mining Contract, latest information from FAA, is the EPA is expected to have the review done by the first quarter of 2019, with the hope of actual mining beginning in the second quarter of 2019. Under new business, on your agenda, there's an item for asphalt zipper. Some of the older, more seasoned local members have looked at asphalt zipper in the past. It's essentially an industrial strength roboter that will allow the city to actually begin trying to rebuild some of the road beds that are deteriorating and keep the city from having to go out of contract, which would be much more expensive. So, recommendation from the public works would be to go ahead and approve the asphalt zipper, which would give the city, you know, more options as far as getting a lot of our deteriorating homes taken care of. The next public works meeting will be June 26th, 3:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia and Marty.
Both, Marty and I, with, and I'm gonna let him talk this time.
I'm gonna ask you to clarify something right at the end.
Oh, thanks.
Chedco met at Woolies on June 15th at noon, and had special guests at the board meeting. We were joined by Joe Fiala and Lori Frederick from the Governor's Office of Economic Development. Exciting to hear them talk about some of the possibilities, and they're discussing, Chedco discussing, again, the mission of finding a suitable place to consider doing an industrial park. One of the things that seemed to stand out, that Joe Fiala, who's actually an ex-Hot Springs native, he's excited about Hot Springs and the growth potential here, said one of the main things that site selectors will look for when they're going down their checklist is land or building availability, and if they see that that's not available, you're pretty much gonna miss the boat, is basically what they're saying. So that's obviously very essential to site selectors. He said economic development, it's important to always keep your eye on these site selector checklist, because they change from time to time. Usually it deals with property, schools, daycare, jobs for trailing spouses, and so on. It was encouraging to hear that we're not the only ones that are dealing with possible workforce housing problems, and that's a fairly common problem, especially for small towns who are just feeling some growth, are feeling some growing pains. Mentioned a interesting, and I would like to check that out, and anybody who gets to Whitewood, there's a three-story, I think it's like a townhouse built in Whitewood, and he talked about what a small footprint they had utilized for that. So that's the type of building that they would maybe encourage for Hot Springs to look into. There's also a certification, if you do have an industrial park, which he mentioned is quite rigorous, but it's great to have if you have an industrial park that is certified. It has greater appeal for site selectors as well. I encourage everybody, especially the council, to register for a free upcoming webinar. It's called, it's for elected officials and economic development, what you need to know to serve your constituents. That will be on June 20th from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. Central Time. So that would be 9:30, I believe, we're an hour earlier, right? 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. Mountain Time. 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. Mountain Time. If the council is interested, you'll actually send out an email with the information you can register on website, which is www.eskredydeparted.com, and I can send more information in regards to that. Lori Frederick was with the community development, and I missed part of what she had said at the beginning of the meeting. There was also something about a photo contest. Do you have information about that, because I missed that?
Well, the radio station from Shadron was talking with Chedco on possibilities of how we could raise awareness of our town, and one of them was to use a photo contest. So that's something that they're going to be looking at and working with, and so it's interesting and may follow here.
Okay. Anything else?
The next meeting, it's always on the third Friday of every month, so.
At New Millers.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar is not here. The only thing that I would have to report from Jason that would be of interest to the council, the new irrigation system. They're having some issues with getting it regulated so that where the old piping is, the pressure's not too high, and they're having some leak issues with that. Jason is working that with both the contractor and the individual company that has our computer program that monitors that, and he's on top of it. Just the mismatch of the two systems is causing some issues. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron is not here. Comprehensive Plan, Sam?
Actually, I have something to report this time. All right, we met on June 13th, which was last Wednesday, in attendance was myself and Administrator Kim Barbieri. We discussed several issues. We discussed the future land use of the city of Hot Springs, including planning for and mapping out new boundaries for the downtown commercial centers, farming and agriculture areas, residential areas, and sewer service area, and the future of the city's expansion, including making a map for that. We discussed future annexations, including the Hot Springs Municipal Airport annexation with regards to taxation of goods and services sold at the airport to visitors and residents, and to impacts of the upcoming Pete Lean and Sons mining contract on the airport grounds. Another issue for annexation was land in Cascade Road near the hospital, which could be zoned into a new commercial zone to serve the Highway 18 truck bypass, as well as the residents who live in that area. We discussed future right-of-way abandonments, in which the city of Hot Springs would abandon unused right-of-ways to the property owners that abut them, which would give the property owners more land and provide additional tax revenue for the city. This would be a big project with many pieces to abandon, but Administrator Barbieri plans to tackle this project in parts, spread out over the next couple of years, which would allow for a more manageable workload for herself and the staff of the city. We expect this project to generate substantial additional tax revenue for the city of Hot Springs. We also discussed the revised introduction to the comprehensive plan, which will provide background and history, not only for the city, but also for the plan itself. We discussed possible revisions and clarifications. It's an interesting read, and I would encourage everybody to read the comprehensive plan, which is available on the city of Hot Springs website. We are currently in the process of scheduling our next meeting.
Thank you, Sam, appreciate it. Moving on in the agenda, we do have the first reading of ordinance 1189, which is supplemental appropriation ordinance. I would accept a motion to approve the first reading of that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading of the ordinance 1189 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the ordinance 1189 supplemental appropriation ordinance. And Misty, could you give us a quick summary of what that ordinance contains?
We attempt to, twice a year, do supplemental appropriation ordinances as needed. In our general fund, we are appropriating an additional $3,500 to snow removal. Excessive weather conditions early in 2018 used up more of the salaries and wages than we anticipated. The source of funding for that will be our unassigned fund balance in the general fund. In our additional sales tax fund, we are appropriating $122,760 to the object code of principal. The expense was the result of some Boulder Falls assessments that were collected in advance to the tune of $90,000, and unused rural development loan proceeds of $32,760. Those monies, instead of keeping them on our books and accruing interest, we deemed it would be more appropriate to pay down the balances of those loans, and so we needed to appropriate that expense. It's already been approved by this council, but this doesn't officially in our budget. And then a transfer out in the additional sales tax fund of $102,830, also already been approved by this council, and that was for the golf course fund, the irrigation improvements that were already done by Triple Creek LLC. Source of funding was the restricted for golf course improvement balance and our restricted fund balance in the 202 fund for those new expenses. In our Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund, we are appropriating $2,705 to the, from the baseball, T-ball improvement balance, restricted for those projects. And those were for field improvements that were approved by the baseball and T-ball group. That was already approved by this council as well. And then the transfers out of the additional sales tax fund, golf course irrigation improvements need to be appropriated in the golf course fund, same dollar amount, $102,830. Since that fund is responsible for paying Triple Creek LLC, we transferred the money out of where it was sitting, put it into that fund, and then give them the ability to spend it. And those are the totals of the appropriations for our first appropriation for 2018.
Okay. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. Go ahead and ask Misty if you can call the role, please.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Carleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Caroline Sorsabak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Move on to new business, item eight, a possible motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to transfer the 2018 budget annual operating transfers from water, $100,000, and wastewater, $100,000 funds to the general fund. I accept a motion to authorize that fund transfer.
I'll make the motion to authorize the fund transfer of $100,000 from the 602 water, $100,000 from the 604 wastewater, and into the 101 general funds.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We make that transfer. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? And Misty, you might want to just give us a quick summary of what that entails.
For the last 15-plus years, those funds supplement the 101 fund. There's a few different ways you can look at that supplement, because they are operated by the city, they don't pay property taxes, you can look at it like you pay it in lieu of taxes. Also, being operated by the city, they don't have to pay sales tax on their purchases, which would essentially come back to the city, so you can look at it as a supplement in that way. Hasn't increased or changed over the last 15 years. We did budget for both of these transfers, but because I am moving money from one fund to another, I like counsel approval, just to document the movement of that money. Another thing that the city does for both of those funds is all the payroll and the accounting. So although it is an inter-fund transfer, it's not necessarily a subsidy.
Okay, thank you, Misty. If there are any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of this transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve the asphalt zipper proposal and to provide the finance officer authorization to sign the HDAC by inter-local contract form to participate in their cooperative purchasing agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the asphalt zipper proposal to provide finance officer authorization to sign the HDAC by inter-local contract form to participate in their cooperative purchasing agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this asphalt zipper proposal. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question. We had a zipper used for trial or something, and that's the same company or not?
Yes.
Okay, and they liked the way it worked? That one, or is this an update?
And Steve, would you come to the microphone and give an explanation as to what some of the tasks that that zipper would provide us with and the money that we might be able to save by purchasing?
Okay, the zipper that we have looking at is the same.
Your mic is wrong. Sorry.
It's on the bottom.
It's on now?
Nope. Sometimes takes a second. I see the light, the light was on.
Should I just get real close? Like, oh, sorry.
Okay, this is the same zipper as we, that they took and showed us before. It has been, you know, there's been a few updates on it, but not very many. This, and some of you already was involved in the last demonstration that they did for us, so you kind of know what it's, what it's there for and what it does. We're looking at it for cost efficiency of repairing our roads, and plus the savings that we have from not contracting these, kind of just kind of worked out. And it's going to save product, time, and which individually adds up to money as well, you know. I believe that it's something that we really could use, and it won't be just sitting around here, it's going to be used quite frequently.
We did it on some of the alleys, I remember, before.
Yes, we did, and we had a contractor come in and do some of the alleys, and we compared the price of what they charged, just to what the purchasing of this machine would give us, and then get some of the savings.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, does this proposal include the oiler that we talked about in the public safety meetings?
It's not really an oiler, it's a water tank that is provided with a machine, so you can put bad water into it as you grind it.
Okay. And what about, wasn't there one of the options that we could actually put oil down to rejuvenate the tailings?
No, not, not with the machine.
Okay, that would be, that would be separate.
That would be separate, yes.
Steve, are you familiar with maintenance on the machine? Would you be able to do your maintenance on the machine as well?
Yes, that's part of their program, is they'll, they'll have a little bit of training program on that, that gives you the general maintenance for that machine. I've been around heavy equipment for, geez, I don't know how many years, but, so it's pretty familiar with me. I've never been around exactly this type of machine, but I is familiar, I'm familiar with the machine.
I was curious, there is a one-year warranty on it, is there a maintenance contract available at all that could potentially be added on to this?
I think there's a potential two-year warranty that can go along with this machine, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and from what I read, that was the only concern. I was looking at mine, and there definitely had times of maintenance issues, the teeth can come off.
Yeah, and that's a rare item, that would be under warranty unless the machine actually broke, where the teeth actually mount to the drone, but more likely that's unlikely to happen.
And do you, another thing that was highly recommended with this use was having one or two people that are really accustomed to operating it, and they're the people that always operate and decide.
And that's kind of what our policy is, when we come to an expensive piece of equipment like this, there's only certain operators that are allowed to do it. And that protects us from the damages it could incur from an unfamiliar operator.
Exactly, okay.
So I see that it has operation manuals and training, so it'll come to train wherever location.
That's included in the price, and that is a delivered price.
Yes.
Can you explain why it's important to take advantage of this proposal now as opposed
As of now, this machine is at $143,000, and $143,580 will we can purchase this machine with, with the accessories that we'd like to have for our piece of equipment, so it'll work with our loaders and to this day. And if we wait, and by, I got a call today, and I only got two of these left, so that's something to keep in mind.
I'm going to text him.
The next proposal, if we wait until after this 30 days, you know, raise this and sell the existing machines that they have today. The existing machines that they have today are non-smog related, so by them putting the new machine that they have to pass the federal regulations, it jumps that machine cost up tremendously loud. And that's why the difference is on this machine, it's about $40,000.
Around?
Yeah, right around $40,000. The next available machine after these 30 days, or after these two machines are gone, is going to raise the price up to $181,000, at $813, $30. So if we, and we've been, we've been on this machine for about four years, and every year that we wait, we lose money. We gotta, you know, I don't remember the exact number it was when we started it for this, to buy this machine, but it has raised the loss.
Yeah.
And if we wait, you know, just 30 days or 60 days, it could potentially cost us another $40,000, which that is one year's payment on this machine.
We do plan to discuss and have the opportunity to accept the proposal and discuss at the next council meeting how we'll pay for it. I have got two out of three quotes for financing, and I plan to present those if this is approved at the admin finance meeting, and then at the next council meeting for approval by the council.
And it appears those quotes are around $40,000 a year of finance costs?
Yeah, even a little less.
Okay, great.
Misty, could we, between now and that meeting, if it's approved, also look at the possibility of extending the warranty, and how much that would cost?
I could check into that for us, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that the council, for the last two years, has recognized that money needs to be set aside for repair of our streets. Two years ago, it was $50,000. This year, it was $60,000 for the repair of the streets. But that was mostly for maintenance and top coat, chip and seal, it's taking care of the surface of the street. A lot of our streets, the bed, the base of the roads are breaking down, so that's not something that the city has the ability to take care of, that's where the contracts come in. So what this machine allows them to do, again, in an industrial strength rotator fashion, is go down and rejuvenate that roadbase that then the top can be put on. In a lot of cases, it creates an oil coat or something to at least get that back, hit that roadbed to stop deteriorating and get to a point where something can be done with the streets at less cost. And this is what, this machine will allow the city crews to start doing that. They've already identified streets in the city that need repair, so they've got a list of horse to, to less, and this will allow them to begin doing that on our own, rely on contractors to rejuvenate that roadbed and get roads in better condition.
Can I specify too, we're looking at it, because I was a little bit confused on the actual, so like you said, it's like a big rotator. So it's basically grinding it up. So once you've done that, like if you had a section of puddles, you would still need somebody to come in and pour asphalt.
Yes, it's taken to do the top coat, we'd either have a blatter coat put on it, which is a small amount of oil, and then they chip seal that, seals the bottom layer, but otherwise it's just going to be. But otherwise, it's just going to be a milled road, it'll be milling, it's kind of like gravel, not quite, it's got more oil in it. And the other bonus part to that is, once we grind that, we don't have to haul that material off, we can dislaze it right back on the ground. And we just pack that in with our roller and water, and it's ready for service.
Misty was talking about how to pay for it, that's the future conversation. When you were first looking at it, it probably works, the, we're looking at about $29,000 for the early payment. So that would be half of $30,000, $60,000 for the payment. And then the other $30,000 could be used for those tacos, you know, where they actually need it. Misty, and what the interest rates are going up, so it may make more sense to look at, should we buy it outright? And then you still have, if the council throws a successive year, then you'd have full $60,000 to put towards the repair of the streets rather than half of it towards payment.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask all those in favor purchasing the asphalt zipper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, we'll be looking at that on the next agenda, how we pay for it. I did one.
Thank you, Steve.
I just did want to say to the public, and again, thanking you, Steve, and the maintenance department for coming forward with this initiative. It shows that we appreciate the initiative that you've taken to find a less expensive way to expend our resources and keep our streets up to date. So please pass that on to the rest of you folks, and thank you very much. Item C, I would ask that there be a motion to table the approval of the Houston Avenue Sewer Project easement. As mentioned, we should be getting that signature within the next couple of days, and if not, we do have an alternative workaround, and we can certainly prove that for sure at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the Houston Avenue Sewer Project, uh, to table, the Houston, the approval of the Houston Avenue Sewer Project easement.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
To table this approval for the Houston Avenue Sewer Project easement, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have item D, a possible motion and discussion to approve a bid going out for the City of Hot Springs Roof Improvement Project. There's four roofs listed there. If you did not, walking into the Mueller Civic Center tonight, the bucket's on the floor. And those bids would be accepted at 2:50 PM on Tuesday, July 10th to 18th. You'll also have a copy of that bid project sheet in your package. I'd accept that motion at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve going out to bid for the 2018 City of Hot Springs Roof Improvement Project for City Hall, Mueller Civic Center, wastewater treatment plant, and Evans Pumping Station, with bids accepted until 2:50 PM on Tuesday, July 10th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those bids going out. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Again, appreciate our engineer wanting to get all four of these. I think we, again, by lumping all of these together should get a more attractive, less expensive bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Wind Shadow Enterprises, the Hot Springs Vault to be used on 6/16/18 at the Miss South Dakota Pageant Taco Nacho Bar at the Mueller Civic Center. And again, you notice the date is post the, the individual that has the Hot Springs Vault is new to the area, did not realize they needed to get their application in on time. So we're approving this post-event. I accept a motion to make that approval at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Wind Shadow Enterprises LLC, doing business as the Hot Springs Vault to be used on June 16, 2018, at the Miss South Dakota Pageant Taco Nacho Bar at the Mueller Civic Center, 101 South Sixth Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this temporary beverage license. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve an alcoholic beverage license application from the Consoar Corporation, Bourbon County, and that'll be for Butler Park on the Fourth of July for the picnic, to be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, a new event for the Chamber.
Make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Consoar Corporation, doing business as Bourbon County, to be used at Butler Park on July 4th for the Fourth of July picnic, sponsored by the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this temporary alcoholic beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a motion before you and discussion to set a public hearing for the July 2nd meeting at 7:20 PM to consider an application to transfer an existing liquor license, you see, from Fresh Start to BW Gas and Convenience Retail. I'd accept a motion to set that public hearing at this time.
I'd like to make a motion, set a public hearing at 7:218 at 7:20 PM to consider the application to transfer the existing off-sale packaged liquor license from Fresh Start Convenience Store in Culbridge to BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, DEA, Yesway Store 1177.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set that public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, we have finance officer report, Misty.
Happy that we are. This is done. Thank you to those of you that came and the questions that you asked and your interest in understanding our finances. I think Bob mentioned it was fifty-something pages. For those of you in the public interested in reviewing all of those pages, once DLA, which is the Department of Legislative Audit, has approved the report they have preliminarily sent, it will be published on our website and available for public consumption. Budget work for 2019 is ongoing. We plan to review the work that's done so far with our department heads at our next department head meeting. And on our next council agenda, we will have a motion to set the schedule for the budget hearings. With the responses I've received, it looks like the 24th and the 26th, if I have those dates right, in July, the Tuesday and Thursday in July, will be when we'll have those budget hearings. And I'm looking forward to, just like the audit, getting that all wrapped up and moving forward to finish up this year. We still have not received any interest in the vacancy that will be on our council in Ward 2 at the next meeting.
Ward 3.
Ward 3, sorry. Carol Anne, she's quick to tell me, because that's her board, and it's her spot that will be vacant. So if you or anyone you know lives in that ward and may be interested, we are accepting and would like to have those, not necessarily, I wouldn't call it application, but kind of resume stating why they're interested in the position and what their goals would be for serving on the council. We'd like to have those in by the 27th of this month, so that they can be presented to the new council for the first meeting in July. And ideally, we would like to be able to appoint someone to serve in that position so we don't have a vacancy. On that note, I want to thank those on the council that will be leaving. It's been a pleasure working with you, Georgia and Carol Anne. Skylar's not here, but your years of experience and your help to me in my position and to all of us on the council that you serve with, who will definitely be missed. But one thing I've learned about this job is that change happens all the time. So although you'll be missed, we will move on. But you may get called or two from me, so thank you for all the help that you've provided and the support that you've shown, and you most definitely will be missed. And Skylar, if you've listened to this, we'll miss you as well. I'm sorry you're not here to say goodbye to.
Okay, thank you, Misty. And moving on to the mayor's report, we do have KNBN is going to be in Hot Springs for doing a live broadcast on Friday, and they did, they are spotlighting Hot Springs. They did a piece on Hot Springs and the tax rebate that you as a council provided. And I just want to give you an update since the beginning of the year. We've had over $2.2 million of building permits to date. That keeps going up, and 1.4 of that is residential, 1.4 million. So very, very positive numbers, and perhaps a reason why the RFP for alternative workforce housing hasn't been approved or nobody submitted, because the contractors have been, we did get a chance to share that information on a piece tonight on KNBN News locally. And also, we're looking at the impact of the VA Call Center. And one of the things that I wanted to reiterate, we're thankful to have the VA having the Call Center here. It uses a facility, it helps identify and continue to identify us as a veterans' town that helps veterans nationwide as a result of our ability through the Call Center. But it also highlights why we need workforce housing, to house those people that are coming to work there. Again, as Bob mentioned, the RFP for workforce housing, we did not have any takers. That doesn't mean that we're not going to give up trying. And one of the other areas that beginning to re-explore is the neighborhood works, particularly for the water tower lot that they have left empty in our town for the last couple of years. And I've got a message in to them to ask what their plans on that. We'll push that a little bit harder, and maybe we can get some activity there. The other area that we are working on is a cantilever sidewalk design, as I mentioned and I think before to the council, DOT and their design has not approved that. And what that would involve is a six-foot sidewalk on each side of the street, narrow traffic lanes, and that would take away from, take the sidewalk space away from the existing businesses on our River Street area. And that totally is unacceptable. I would like to form a team of the Chamber Economic Development in the city to really see if we can exert some political and pressure. I believe this is as much of an economic development issue as it is a safety issue. We are a town that does not have a bypass, so we have placarded trucks going through our main street or River Street Business District. Today, as I was talking to Kristi Noem's office concerning our concerns about this, there happened to be about ten National Guard large trucks that went right in front of the mayor's office. So we do want to keep working it and get the community involved to recognize that this is a one chance that we can do perhaps first of development, and we need help, obviously, from DOT, first of all, to design it. We're going to need funds, and, but it is well worth the effort, I believe. So with that, I also want to thank you, Georgia, Carol Anne, and Skylar, for your service to the community. You know, a lot of us, we like to complain and say how bad things are, but very few roll up their sleeves and get in the arena. You two have, you've made an impact on our community, and we thank you for that, and I just wanted to publicly recognize that tonight. Wish you well. Leave your phone numbers.
Oh, I got them.
Okay, good. But best wishes, and again, thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Can I say thank you to everybody? And I've been doing this on and off for 14 years, so I think it's time to leave the stage and leave it in good hands with all of you. I like you. You did a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate working with Misty and everybody that, Georgia. We've come a long ways, baby.
At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
To make the motion to go into executive session for personnel, South Dakota Code Type 101-25-21 personnel.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there will be no action taken after. It is the last. Last item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Been moved and, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, be adjourned. Thank you.